All right, good evening everyone and welcome to our first meeting in December. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated January 3rd, 2019, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the rooms. The City has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you, roll call please.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Ms. McTiernan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Here.
President Nydus?
Here. Okay, I'll ask whichever eighth graders want to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to come on up to the mic and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, gotcha.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the notice regarding closed sessions, hearings, and comments?
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at Rlicatis@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you're using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the appointments meeting of November 11th?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a motion to approve the regular and closed session meetings of November 18th?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And do I have a motion to approve the appointments closed session meeting of November 21st?
So moved.
Second.
David?
I'm going to recuse myself.
All right, okay, yep, absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Welcome everyone, happy December. So first of all, you have until Monday, December 9th, to bring some holiday cheer to local family by joining the Summit PBA #55 and the Summit FMBA Local 54 to provide holiday gifts for children in Union County and the surrounding area. To participate, please bring new unwrapped toys to donation boxes at City Hall and other Summit locations listed on the City of Summit website, which is cityofsummit.org. On Saturday, this Saturday, December 7th, the Summit area YMCA is hosting Santa's Holiday Party and Annual Tree Lighting on, from 5:30 to 7:00 on the Village Green. There will be holiday music and photos with Santa, hot chocolate, and holiday activities. The Y will also be collecting men's hats and gloves for Bridges Outreach. Please bring a pair if you can. I am very pleased to announce that the Summit has received a $352,000 grant for its West End Avenue Improvement Project from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the fiscal year 2020 local aid grants. Since the Engineering Division began tracking these grants in 2008, Summit has received 13 consecutive awards totaling over $3.5 million in local aid grant funding. I would like to congratulate and thank the Engineering Department and their team for work in securing this award. And lastly, I want to thank the City staff and especially Division of Public Works for your excellent work over the past few days. It was a tricky storm because the forecasts, if you all were looking at the weather forecast, they kept changing. One minute it was going to be rain, the next minute it was going to be snow. Who knew? In any event, it was a coordinated effort among departments to keep the streets clear, citizens safe, and the information flowing. So I appreciate the efforts of the DPW yesterday and frankly every day. And that's it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On to our City Minister, Michael Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. It is that time of year to start discussing the next year's municipal budget, and a special public meeting of common council for the preliminary 2020 capital budget will be held on Wednesday, December 11th at 6:30 in the Whitman Community Room on the second floor of City Hall. Congratulations to Summit Fire Department Lieutenant and Fire Subcode Official Joseph Michelle, who is the recipient of the 2019 Fire Official of the Year Award. The award is given annually by the New Jersey Chapter of the Automatic Fire Alarm Association to an inspector that exceeds the standard established by the National Fire Protection Association for enforcing requirements of a code or standard, or for approving equipment, materials, or installation, or a procedure. Again, congratulations to Joe. Beginning this week, once the snow clears, and continuing for approximately two weeks, the Division of Public Works and its hired contractor will complete jet cleaning and video inspection of sanitary sewer lines on parts of Rotary Drive and Ashland Road, and portions of Division Avenue and Colt Road in southwest Summit. Roads will be open to traffic during this work. And finally, I'd like to share some fun facts from the storm that were given to me by the Department of Community Services for this official first winter storm. The unofficial total, however, for snowfall is five inches. The Division of Public Works spent 75 person-hours on Sunday and 308 person-hours on Monday and into Tuesday morning treating and clearing city streets, parking lots, and sidewalks. Approximately 200 tons of salt and 100 gallons of liquid calcium were applied. No brine was used due to the forecasts of rain, and no other major incidents reported during the storm event. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President, thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. On to our presentations tonight. So tonight we have two sets of presentations, the first of which is presentations from students from Lawton C. Johnson Middle School in their eighth grade, who, all of the students there do what's called a public policy forum, and it, different, you know, students are in groups and they create presentations about different topics of areas that they want the City to be cognizant of that they would like addressed. And over the last few years that I've been able to go there, many of the topics that they raise are actually issues that we end up addressing, including last council's meeting on plastics, which was a topic that had been discussed by students there. So we certainly take what, and I know almost all of the folks who are sitting here in the dais have gone to, if not all of them, gone to these public policy forums, walked through, talked to the students, and we find them, from our perspective, very informative and very useful, because it gives us insight to what the people who will actually come after us and inherit this town want to see done. So we certainly appreciate all the hard work that the students do, and all the hard work that the teachers do, and their educator Teresa Martin is here, and we thank her for being here tonight with us as well. So we have three presentations tonight, the first of which, I'm going to ask the students to come up, identify who they are, the first of which deals with Meatless Monday. So come on up, and tell, come to the mic, tell us who you are, and then give your presentation, please. Maybe you guys could turn around. There you go. Now the TV won't see it. Oh. Yeah, use the microphone, just pull it down towards you, there you go, and just speak towards it, yeah. Just identify each one of who you are.
I'm Molly Rose Smith.
I'm Olivia Quay.
I'm Isabella Diaz.
Okay.
And we're the Meatless Mondays group.
Okay, so we like to talk about implementing a Meatless Monday system into our food service, but before we talk about that, I'd like to introduce the issue of red meat. So most of you probably know that red meat is unhealthy, and in comparison to white meat, it's probably not the one you want to eat. Well, this is because there are carcinogens found in red meat, and when it's cooked, the carcinogens sort of activate, and that in turn can lead to cancer, diabetes, obesity, and other different types of diseases. There are also high levels of unsaturated fat in red meat, and that can also lead to many diseases, heart attacks, strokes, heart disease, and even death in severe cases. Now, on the contrary, white meat is actually very protective of your immune system, and it actually can reduce the amount of risks that your body can take while undergoing a large consumption of red meat. So while we were researching a solution for this problem, we decided to implement a Meatless Monday solution into our Summit Public Schools service.
What is Meatless Monday, you may ask? Meatless Monday is a program where you reduce the amount of red meat and highlight and increase the amount of healthier options such as white meat, beans, and vegetables. We'd like to implement this in, to start our school as a pilot for one week. We'd like to do this by adding these healthier options to the menu, and on Mondays, we would exchange the sandwich bar for a salad bar. We'd like to do this because students, they already have the option to choose what they want, but it might not be the healthiest for them, and they might want something healthier. We would like to first implement this at our school and hopefully impact the entire town.
Meatless Mondays wouldn't cost us a penny. It would actually save us $400 a year in which we could use in other much-needed areas of the school, such as adding water fountains and making our infrastructure much better. We would contact Pontonian Food Service and ask them to add meatless options on Mondays and lessen the price of the whole food. We would also contact Meatless Mondays as they would give us a grant to add lessons to our classes to teach students about Meatless Mondays. We would also put posters around the school, all funded by Meatless Mondays, to raise awareness and get recipes from them to implement, to make students implement this in their home life. We're not against eating meat, we're actually, we think meat is very healthy for growing students, but as everything in life, eating too much meat could cause harmful diseases and many other things. So we would like to implement Meatless Mondays to change the way Summit eats forever.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions for members of council? Can I, let me start off. Did you guys talk to your other students, and what was their reaction to it?
We made a survey, and not many of them thought Meatless Monday was very important, but we actually think, there's a lot of diseases going around in town, such as, a family friend of mine, he almost had a stroke from eating too much meat, and not many people realize how important other options such, like meatless options are to your body.
Does anybody have, does anything have a question? Wait, 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 hold on.
I just want to acknowledge, like over the years, we've all given presentations, and we're like, this meeting from a script.
Yes.
They did that with no script, and it was phenomenal.
Yes, very nicely done.
So I absolutely want to applaud your recommendations here, and I want to hear about how it goes in the home. Are you all having meatless opportunities in the home?
Okay, so actually Molly here, her family is mostly vegetarian, so she already doesn't eat that much meat. And then Isabella and I, we would both be vegetarians if our parents would let us. Yeah, they said that eating meat.
Your parents are in the audience, right?
They said that eating meat was vital to our health and our growth, so we were sort of forced to not become vegetarian until we grow up.
I do have chances at home to not eat meat when I refuse to eat my mom's food sometimes, and she makes the other foods, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Public speaking is not easy, girls and young ladies, and you did a really great job, so I appreciate your coming here tonight.
Yes, very much so, we all appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go on to the next group. We have the vaping group to come up. So again, same thing, if you guys could identify yourselves and show your presentation.
Hi, I'm Kate Sharman.
I'm Ella Callahan.
I'm Sienna Kessler.
And today we'd like to bring to your attention the recent crisis of vaping that has surfaced throughout Summit and throughout the nation. We have found that this has affected mostly middle schoolers and high schoolers, and the reason for this is the main producer of vapes, the company Juul, has actually been targeting their advertisement towards teenagers by using appealing flavors such as mint, cucumber, tutti fruity, and something that kids would be drawn to. We have researched that there have been multiple vape-related deaths and countless amount of people admitted into the ICU for vaping-related illnesses, and we have found that Summit has not done anything major to prevent this from happening to any of the citizens. They've just kind of told students that vaping was bad, but they haven't gone into depth on what it really does to your body and how it can affect you long-term and short-term. And vaping is technically legal, so there would, it would be a much bigger deal to eliminate vaping altogether, but we have found ways to limit vaping, and, yeah.
So we decided that we interviewed some of our classmates and adults, like our parents and other citizens of Summit, and so we asked them questions like, do you think that this is an issue that's important and that it should be addressed? And the majority of people, the 74% of the people that we interviewed, said that it was a very important issue that needs to be addressed, and it's a reoccurring issue. So I think that it's important that we do something about this.
So this vaping epidemic has definitely taken its toll, and it's definitely starting to take its toll on Summit. So this is definitely something that needs to be addressed, and thankfully, there are ways that we can address this issue. So one of the ways would be partnering with the County Health Department to create a public health campaign, which would basically mean putting up posters around the town to, amongst other things, to raise awareness and demonstrate to our city what vaping really does, and how it affects children and parents alike. Another thing we could do is implement a prevention specialist into the elementary schools, mostly fifth graders, to just introduce them into what vaping is, and further explain in the middle schools and the high schools, and go more into depth on why vaping is such a big problem and what it really does, because not many kids are aware of what vaping does to your bodies and the effects that it has on you.
So adding on to the specialist, we would have the specialist come in, a certified prevention specialist, come in and do an assembly for middle schoolers, high schoolers, and possibly even fifth graders. And they would, he would also come in and talk to the parents, to educate the parents on how to like identify the vapes, because lots of parents don't know what vapes look like, and how to find them, and how to know if your kid is like on a vape or using a vape.
And this actually has become a lot more difficult for the parents due to off-brand vape distributors, putting vapes in things such as sweatshirt hoodies, watches, pens, and so kids are able to vape right under the noses of their parents and teachers. And there was this one video that showed a bunch of kids in a classroom, they all got vapes, and they were all hidden, so sweatshirt hoodies and watches, and the parents and the teachers were challenged to go and find the vapes, and in the end, the parents and the administrators couldn't even find half of the vapes that were in that room. And this makes it very easy for these kids to damage themselves by vaping. Now, the specialists would cost from around $150 to $250 per assembly, and this would mostly come out of the budget of the school PTO. We think that another good thing would be to put around no vaping signs. So there are a lot of no cigarette signs, as I'm sure you all have seen, but there, people are starting to create like no vaping signs because that's become another major issue. So putting those in stores and around Summit to limit the amount of places that kids can vape would definitely be beneficial.
Great, thank you. This is an extremely important issue. There is without a doubt, what you guys have identified is a huge public health issue, something that we all need to take very seriously. Commend you for raising it here, because I think people should hear that students and kids or young adults are very much concerned about their own health and their impact to their own friends, and I think that you're absolutely right. We do have a responsibility to do something about it. So I'm going to open up for questions. Beth?
Thank you. I want to commend you as well. That was an excellent presentation, your public speaking skills were tremendous as well. I want, I had one question for you, and then I have a question for Chief Wegg. Do you feel that the recent news about vaping deaths and injuries to kids, is that well-known among your peers and population, or do you feel like that's still something that kids think isn't going to happen to them?
Sadly, I don't think that many kids realize what vaping is. A lot of kids still think vaping is just smoking water, they don't understand the harm that it has.
And actually, we found that kids that vape are twice as more likely to go back to cigarettes when they're older.
And they, there are definitely kids in our grade that we know vape, they vape in the libraries, they'll vape in the bathrooms, and there's not much that's being done to prevent that, and they're obviously not educated on the effects, so they don't stop.
Thank you. Chief Wegg, is, in the DARE program, is vaping specifically addressed, and has that been added to the DARE program?
So it's not officially in the curriculum, the DARE officers do touch on it, and January 7th at the high school, the Summit Police Department and the Board of Education is holding a vaping, anti-vaping seminar for parents, and then one for the students is in the works.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kate, Marjorie?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm just curious, has there been anything done at the advisories about vaping? At the school?
Not really specifically going into vaping, it's been more like drugs and alcohol as a whole, not specifically touching on vaping directly.
There definitely have been, it has been spoken about a little, but not as much as it needs to be addressed. Okay, thanks.
Great.
Thank you, and thank you for raising this extremely important issue. So we will be discussing in the Safety Committee, the ways that Summit can be limiting access to vapes from teenagers especially, who are most vulnerable, and also who are being targeted by the ads from the vape companies. So we're going to be discussing that in the next couple of meetings, and we're aware that other towns in the region, including Westfield, have also passed some ordinances. So we're moving forward on that. Thank you.
Nora?
I'm really glad to hear, Chief, that we're doing something on January 7th, because I think definitely there's a role for government, but frankly, parents need to be involved here. I mean, that's the number one line of defense. They need to be educating themselves and their children, and there's plenty of stuff in the news, parents should be learning this. So I'm delighted, because that's where it needs to start.
I want to congratulate you guys, excellent presentation, ladies. You really did a great job. And what I'm really excited about is, I think it's great that parents have to be more educated on this, and I love the fact that, it sounds like the schools are bringing in people to help educate students, but what is fantastic about your presentation is that your peers are the ones that you guys are trying to reach.
Right.
And the most powerful message that can affect behavior changes amongst your peers, your age group, is coming from you guys. So it's fantastic that you're bringing this up and making it aware, and I would encourage, whatever way, raise your hand, get involved, because when you speak to your fellow classmates, it's so much more powerful than someone my age speaking to your classmates. I'm just saying. So I applaud what you guys are doing, and keep it up, it's fantastic. That's how the message is going to get out to young people.
Steve?
I just want to thank you guys again, and I really enjoyed our time that we met last month or whatever. And what I thought was so impressive last time was, we got into a discussion, these three are great athletes as well, and they were talking about how swimming, soccer, and lacrosse, their lung capacity, that, you know, would be affected by it. So, you know, the fact that they're taking it to that level and saying, this is how it's going to affect you, kudos to y'all.
Great job.
Chief, yeah, absolutely.
So just, so at 7:00 PM on the 7th at the high school, they're going to have speakers from prevention links, a doctor that specializes in lung disorders, as well as a psychologist to talk about addiction, and then there'll be a question and answer panel.
Ms. Martin, do you want to come up and?
I was just going to say, if the eighth graders are comfortable raising their hand, if they know somebody that is vaped, I think the statistic, if you're comfortable raising, or like somebody in eighth grade or a friend, it's pretty prevalent. And I guess the question that I have to advise, I think, the other element of this epidemic is social media, and so seeing the videos and who can pop the votes out, how much do you think social media influences eighth graders and kids in Summit to do the vaping?
Well, I don't have social media, so I don't know.
I think social media does have a big effect on kids our age, because everyone wants to like hop on the new trend, and like, if this is something that's like really popular right now, then I feel like that attracts more kids our age, so I don't think.
Yeah, especially, there's a thing on the app Snapchat called private stories, where it's private, not everyone can see it, and only a select group of people that you choose can see it. And when that's private, and you feel that, or the people that are like doing it feel that nobody can see it, they're more drawn to do it, because nobody will find out, and that really influences them.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everyone, what people have been saying, that it's not only, it's parents, it's government's role, it's peer pressure from you guys, talking to your peers, and it's getting people who are professionals involved to help you guys. It's certainly not one way of doing it, but it's a combination of trying to reach people, because you read the stories of what it does to people's lungs as far as vaping, and how dangerous, and it's terrible that these companies have gone out specifically in trying to basically market to young people in order to entice them to be part, to be involved.
There's a store. Oh, yeah. I mentioned this to Councilman Bowman last time we were at the public policy presentation. There's actually a store on the street Beechwood, which is a very popular street for elementary, middle, and high schoolers. It's where the Starbucks and the Sweet Nothing's is, and right across from that line of stores is a store with a glass window, completely clear, and the first thing you see when you look in it is the entire back wall filled with vape and Juul products that's being advertised to the kids, and there's a bunch of signs telling kids to, or advertising it in the front of the store so everyone can see it.
Really?
Yeah.
That's interesting. Okay, well, we'll look into that. Anyone else, any other comments? Again, thank you very much for bringing this, you know, issue up, and you, as your colleagues just before you did, you guys did an excellent job in your presentation. Thank you.
Great job.
Yeah, okay. Last group are folks that want to talk about water fountains with us.
I'm Natalie Jorek.
And I'm Dante Donaldson.
And we have a third member, but he wasn't able to join us tonight, Keith Mahata-Machai.
There's a major problem in Summit, and it's.
Dante, if you could just come to the mic and speak closer. Yeah, that's great, thank you. Speak louder.
There are not a lot of water fountains in Summit, at Major Fields, Tatlock, Glenside, Memorial, and that can cause people to throw their empty water bottles just on the ground and without reusing them, and that causes, of course, more plastic waste. A way to solve this would be to put, implement a tax on sugary beverages, and also implement water fountains. So it actually helps people have more healthier options, and kind of almost encourages them to drink water. to drink water. We would put these water fountains in high foot traffic areas and major fields, such as Glenside, Tatlock, Memorial Field. We'd put one in front of the train station. All these places would be, I think, would get a lot of use.
Adding on to what Dante said, there are currently a few water fountains in Summit. There's one near Brayton School, which is always very dirty, unsanitary, and overall gross. And there's another one near Mondo, a store, that it's very, like, it seems very old and like unsanitary like the other one. And there's a couple images on our poster board that shows like different like models of water fountains that are suitable for outdoor use from the same company, LK, that makes indoor water fountains that the school has. And we would, as Dante said, like possibly install them around Summit using a grant from the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank. And now it is quite expensive, and to cover the cost of installation of seven water fountains, like installation fees, a grant would be needed of $90,000, which is a lot. But I feel like along with all of like, Summit is a very kind of sporty town, there's a lot of people like on the fields and walking around, and I feel like it would definitely improve the overall quality of life in Summit if there were like, you know, cleanly sanitary water fountains around. And I feel like people would, you know... And the Summit municipal budget of 2016 was $51.3 million. So I believe that there's enough money in the budget to squeeze in a couple of new water fountains in Summit.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So we'll say to Paul Cascay, who's our director of community services, Paul, you better be going out there looking for those grants. What I will say, and thank you also for coming in for excellent job in your presentation. I remember seeing your presentation, and I think one of the cool things, that if you see that display, they have pictures of water fountains that allow you to fill water bottles.
Right.
And so that goes to Dante's point about trying to reduce plastic pollution, which is something that, as we previously discussed, is something as a goal to try to reduce overall in town.
That's right. I believe that the new community services building, all the water fountains there, you can, they're all, you know, you put your water bottle in there. I mean, that's the goal. And as you know, yes, it is a large budget, but capital projects is a proportion of it. So absolutely, we, something we are interested in, question is when?
Mike?
Thank you, Council President. No, thank, another great presentation. Thank you so much. I know that the schools have probably been in front of where we are as a municipality, I know, because isn't it quite popular that these schools, there's a lot of those water fountains? That are single fill, they're filtered, they're specifically for water bottles, and you see kids, they really are into them, and they've done a great job there. Are those still pretty popular at schools?
Yes, they're... Bringing them, their own metal water bottles, and fill them up and use them the whole day.
Yeah, so I think that's a good example of, you know, if you build it, they will come. It's one of those things, so.
Thank you, Mike. Susan?
Thank you for an excellent and informative presentation. And I'd like to know, do you know other communities that have these outdoor water fountains?
Actually, so this isn't necessarily a local community, but over the sea, like in Europe, outdoor water fountains are very, very popular. In France, there is an app that you can download that connects all of the different, like, water fountains that are around Paris in the capital. And like, it's a very like easy way to like see, oh, there's a water fountain over here. I don't have to just like throw a water bottle on the ground. And so like other like countries and places have ways to like even stay connected through hydration.
Yes. Adding on to Natalie, Los Angeles, California, they created an ordinance that they done, everyone got an app that could track water fountain usage. And like I said before, they also had a tax, they had a tax on sugary beverages to encourage more water.
Steve?
What I think is neat about this is we've gone full circle, you know? When we were kids, we grew up, there was a water fountain on every ball field that we played in. And the fact that you're encouraging something to that effect is really neat, and I strongly encourage that. So we may have to blow them out, the water pipes out in the winter, but you know, that's easily done.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. I want to thank you guys as well for coming in, and we appreciate, and all of you guys for coming in. So hold on a second, the mayor and I are going to come down and give you guys all certificates for your recognition for coming in tonight.
Council President, may we applaud our awesome students?
Oh, of course, everybody, yes, of course.
Keith is not here, Molly's right. This is the best conversation we've had.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you guys want to get a group photo with everybody, and two of you? Sure, sure.
Okay, take a group photo with all you guys.
Who's taking a photo?
Chief Wegg.
Come on, Chief. No, he's not, he's busy.
Do you guys want to come in? Come on. Come on. All right. Guess I called that.
I know what you did.
You guys stand outside and take a photograph. Okay, you guys sit in front. You will see...
Now, now. I can't be...
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much. (applause)
I wasn't really a gentleman. I put a bomb there.
Did you? Were you making faces?
Okay. Authority, Joe Billy. So Joe, would you like to come up? And I just want to recognize that the chair of the Housing Authority Board is here, Nancy Galliari. So Nancy, thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. I want to talk to my booking agent about booking me after those beautiful children. But whatever. Good evening, Mr. President, council members, mayor, all my esteemed friends on the administration. My annual visit to you to try to give you a brief synopsis of what's going on with the Housing Authority over the past year, and what we're looking forward to do come the future 12 months. So I, there is a boring piece of documentation that should have been distributed to you by the clerk's office, which is the financial audit of the Housing Authority for the period that ended December 31st of 2018. Fortunately, the Housing Authority is in very sound financial position. We have roughly about $3 million in unrestricted assets, so we have a good bit of change to do some projects going forward. The audit provided with no findings, no recommendations, so a very clean audit, we're very happy with that. So we've met all our statutory requirements, from the HUD's point of view, from DCA's point of view, and from the state's point of view. So we're pleased with that. Over the past year, we've had some significant progress at projects at some of the developments. Those of you who've had the opportunity to go around, hopefully, have noticed some exterior lighting and interior lighting, LEDs, motion sensor lighting and the like that we've done at all of the different sites. We've got a lot of positive feedback from the residents about how brighter it is, and how much more secure and safe that they feel because of that. We did install a new laundry equipment at all three of our facilities, and we went onto a, the smart card system, so no one has to be carrying around coins and quarters, and the residents don't have to drag quarters over there, and we don't have to pick them up. So that's a little helpful too for everybody. We did refurbish a few community kitchens, and we put some new bathroom vanities and water-saving faucets at our Glenwood Development Site. We did enhance all of our CCTV security systems at the two family sites. So we expanded it with some higher technology cameras now, and added some additional cameras there, so we have a little bit more of a comfort level to see what's going on there and record what might happen if we need to go back and do a little research if there's any episodes that need us to follow up on. We did some area flooring in the senior building. If you ever get a chance to stop in there, we did a prototype on the second floor and the fourth floor. Take a look. And we changed some styling there with carpeting and with tiling, and we got a very positive response. And of course, when you do something good like that, now the people on the third floor and the fifth floor want to know when they're going to get theirs. We'll get that part through too in the next budget, I'm sure, but that's worked out very well for us. Going forward, we have about $1 million planned in renovations, mainly at the Glenwood Development Site. Glenwood, as you may know, is the first and foremost site here in the city. It's built in 1972. Obviously, our most challenging site because there's 40 units that's built on a postage stamp over there. They didn't really give much area room in that spot. Where they put that is, well, that's where they put it. And we have some significant issues there that we need to address. First and foremost, we have some exterior staircases that we're replacing now. Part of the project is already started. Some of them have deteriorated over time just from weather, the way the building is constructed, they're very exposed, so they get hit with all rain and ice and salt and snow and all of that. So we're ripping those out and installing new staircases there. Fortunately, for most of the units in that development, there's a front staircase and a back staircase. So as we demolish the front staircase, the residents still have access in and out of their apartment from a rear staircase. We do have one problem building there, building number four, which for some reason was built with one staircase only. So there's no two means of egress there. So we're planning that out as to how we're going to address that. Fortunately, four residents live in that particular building, so it's the smallest occupied building, but it's going to be the biggest challenge in this particular rehabilitation work. But we'll get that part done for sure. Also, we're going to replace all the windows and the patio doors there. Most of them are original. They're the slider type of window you may be familiar with, where it's very difficult to install an air conditioner because the whole window slides over. You have to try to put it in, put plastic. It was a bad design from the get-go. We did a similar project about two years ago, three years ago, at Weaver Street, where we removed all of those windows and replaced them with double hungs, and that's actually worked out very, very well. And I will say that most of the residents over there have more open windows now and use a lot less air conditioning than they did in the past because those windows are so much easier to deal with. So we'll do the same thing at Glenwood. And then we have an issue at our Chestnut Senior Building with a deterioration in a main sewer line underneath one of the wings there. It's just collapsed from whatever it might have been weight, how it was built, we don't really know what the cause of it was. So there is about 80 feet of the main sewer line that is going to have to be removed and reinstalled. This will probably be one of the more challenging things the Housing Authority's done in a long period of time. It's the D Wing of the property, if you're familiar with it. It overshadows City Hall, you see it every day. There's 26 residents that live in this particular wing. So when we start the demolition project, there will be no sewer line. So no one will live there without a sewer. So there'll be 26 families, if anybody has a spare room, I'd like to know about it now if I could. But we will have to do something in regards to relocating these folks, whether they can go stay with family, whether we're going to have to relocate them to some facility. In the meantime, it's probably going to be a good 10 to 15 days is the best estimate we have now from the remediation people. So it's not going to be pleasant, it's going to be difficult, and we're going to do everything we can to make everybody as ease and as comfortable as we can to make it happen, with helping them move, providing them with food, whatever we need to do to make it less unfortunate for them. But there's no way that we should continue going forward without ripping up that sewer line. And unfortunately, the way it was built, it's built through the main hallway on the first floor. It's under about 36 inches of concrete. So all the concrete has to be dug out, all of that has to go, there has to be, the rooms, floors have to be sealed with plastic, there have to be air purifiers there. It's going to be very involved. But at the end of the day, it'll be a wonderful project. They're all great at the end of the day, but not when they're going on. So we're dealing with that. And then going forward, outside of the Housing Authority, you know we serve as your contract administrator for your CDBG grants, and we handle that process every year. And I know the city clerk's office is very happy that we handle that project for them. And we're just in that cycle now when the new applications are due to the county. And then we also serve as your affirmative action officer, your administrative agent for your COA units. So when you have affordable units that come online, the Housing Authority does the eligibility screening for you and markets those units to the property owner so that we can assure that the city gets credit for the COA units that are being occupied. And then those units are deed restricted generally for about 30 years. That's my brief synopsis. I was told I had five minutes, so I should move along. I'll entertain any questions, of course, if anyone has.
Thank you, Joe. I'm sure there are questions. Let me start off the questioning. With regard to these projects at Glenwood and the senior housing building, what's the timeframe for doing them?
We have contracts already issued for all of them. So they've started the project for the exterior staircases. We've done one staircase so far. There's nine there that have to be done, and it's really going to be dependent now on the weather. The window project has been contracted as well. The windows are on order, it's about eight to 10 week lead time, and that also is going to be weather resistant, depending on how it goes. Storms like this, you're not installing new windows in people's apartment. So as, if the weather cooperates, we'll do some of them now during the winter months because once they get the protocol going, it'll take them probably about a day to do an apartment. So they'll be able to get in and out of there. But if the weather doesn't cooperate, then we're going to push the rest of it to the spring. The sewer line issue, we've had a lot of conversations with Paul's office, with the engineer, about coordinating that. The one issue in regards to the sewer line is that the storm drain line runs parallel to it under that same floor. So we were a little concerned that if we started the project too soon, and there was the opportunity for rain, it could jeopardize part of the project because we don't really know what we're going to find when they start doing the demolition. So at this point, we have that project scheduled for the beginning of February. We hope that it'll stay cold enough. We don't care if it snows, as long as it doesn't rain. And if it stays cold enough, the holidays will be over, everyone can settle down, and then in February, we can try to get this thing done within about three weeks.
So all of these projects are technically done in 2020, one way or the other?
Yes, yes.
And that still leaves basically a $2 million. You said you have $3 million, and then you have...
Well, the $3 million...
Are you, so, just so I'm clear, you have $3 million right now. That $1 million is applied against that $3 million?
Yes.
Okay, so then you would have $2 million.
There'll be $2 million left, and that's really based on the protocol that was used when we converted the projects from public housing to rental assistance demonstration. And there's a 20-year engineering program, a physical needs assessment. That's what determined how much money we borrowed and got from HUD in order to fulfill that conversion. determined how much money we borrowed and got from HUD in order to fulfill that conversion. So, the $3 million is really supposed to last us for the next 20 years.
Really?
Supposed to. However, these projects are old, and they need a lot more work. And the reason we actually decided to convert out of the public housing division and over to the rental assistance demonstration is because, and I don't want to belabor this and bore you to death, but under the Public Housing Administration, there was the operating fund and the capital fund that was always issued to the Housing Authorities by HUD. And they were, been prorated year after year after year after year for the last 15 years. If you go back 10, 12 years, this Housing Authority would get $500,000 a year in capital improvement money. Go back now three years before we converted, we got $200,000 because of the cutbacks on the federal level.
Right.
So, they came up with this new program to allow us to get out from under that protocol and to actually do a private-public partnership. So, we were able to leverage the value in the, the assessment of those properties and borrow money from the bank, where previously you couldn't do that. Housing Authorities were forbidden to borrow money from any financial institution. You got what HUD gave you, that's how you operated, and good luck with you. And years back, in the late 70s, early 80s, nine, early 90s, money flowed like crazy. If you needed windows, you just asked for money, and they gave it to you, and you put in windows. But that's not how life is anymore. It hasn't been that way for quite some time. So, this $3 million was the estimate for the 20-year lifespan of the physical needs assessment. Now, we believe that because of some of the extra revenue we got from the way this program was converted, we should be able to pay off the 20-year mortgage sooner, and then if necessary, we can borrow additional money as needed.
Is, is there any thoughts, given some of the, some of the age of some of these properties, that rather than investing more money in rehab, that we construct, that we just demolish and start again?
Well, you know, that doesn't exist at, at this point. It's very difficult to do that now. There was a HOPE 6 project program about 12, 15 years ago, and you may recall the big developments like in Newark and Irvington and the like. They were knocking them down, and they were getting federal money to go ahead and build smaller communities, because at the time when they built those developments, they felt that the big condensed community was the way to go. And then they realized, well, that didn't really work out that well. Let's go to smaller communities, and, and that's what they've done. That doesn't exist now, this HOPE 6 program. So, it's very difficult to, to put together the funding that's necessary from all the different components. You may have to look at tax credit programs, private financing, some HUD financing, and most of these deals just don't go through.
And let me ask the final question before I turn it over to all my colleagues. On the sewer project, are you working with Paul's Office? I mean, are you doing a court? Is his office doing it? Are you hiring an outside contractor? How is this working?
No. What we did is we consulted with Paul's Office when we originally found out the problem. He helped us with some sewer maps and with some advice from his engineering people. We have our own engineering people. So, Paul's Office isn't really handling it, but we're sharing the wealth of information between the two of us.
Okay. Turn it over to colleagues. Beth?
Thank you, Council President. I have two questions. One, I am the liaison for those watching to the Housing Authority, so I've been on some of these meetings. But we had originally talked about doing a bypass on the sewer line during the construction so that the only residents that would be displaced were those first-floor residents, and the upper-floor residents would still be able to stay in the building. Is that, is that, has that changed?
It turned out not to be a viable option.
Okay. Secondly, I, as we've discussed many times, one of my big concerns as the liaison is improving the relationship between the housing staff and the residents. So, can you speak to, to some things that you've been doing to improve communication and customer service that the staff is providing to the residents?
Sure. We instituted monthly resident meetings at all three development sites over the last year, so that we get more hands-on with, with the folks that are living there, which has been very helpful. Actually, and your commitment to, to all of this has been very helpful as well. We established a newsletter that we put out, and we're going to try to do that on a quarterly basis to keep that going. We did have a little changeover in staff at the office, which I think has helped greatly in regards to the frontline communication that we had previously.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Council President. Back to the sewer line thing for a second. So, February is a pretty tight timeframe to move all these people. So, where are you in the process of doing that?
We're not.
And they, they know, right? All these residents have been informed that they're going to have to be moved somewhere?
Well, everyone's aware of the staging as to what we're doing. We don't have the specifics yet, because we really haven't gotten to that point as to who needs to go where and do what.
Okay.
Because some of them will have felt, family and relatives that they'll be able to go and stay with. Some will love to have a hotel room on behalf of the Housing Authority and do that. Some have nobody at all and, and won't be able to do that. So, we haven't really defined who's who at this point. We know that there's 26 residents involved.
Okay. Is there a, an absolute deadline for figuring out where people are going?
Well, we want to do it immediately after the holidays.
Okay.
And then come up in the first week of January, start having private individual meetings. Our intention is, instead of doing this as a group meeting with the 26 families, we want to have individual meetings with each resident and their family members to see what's the best we can work out for each one of them.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Mike?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to follow up on something Council President mentioned. No, I, I agree with you. You look at, like, to that Glenn side project, you just wonder what they were thinking when they designed that thing. I don't know whether it was money or short, but, you know, the outdoor staircase, the way the windows are, they're, it, just not really forward-thinking around that. But I, I worry, because, you know, at some stage, these things are just, you know, become so prohibitive to maintain. And you're already saying that this is going on 40 years, housing stock?
72, yeah.
Yeah. So, these are getting old.
Yeah.
And it's going to be, you know, maintenance is going to start to become a bigger and bigger and bigger issue. What are the options around this? I mean, it sounds like it's difficult, but does that mean it's, like, at some stage, these things are not going to be viable to keep pouring money into. So, what then, I guess, is my, my question?
Well, Congressman, I, I think that's exactly where this is going. That's why HUD, I believe, came up with one of the better ideas they've had in a long time. Because if you've dealt with the bureaucracy, as most of you I'm sure have, they'll come up with a wonderful idea, and three years later, they'll find out that that didn't really work. Let's try something else. Here, they came up with this rental assistance demonstration program to break us out of the declaration of trust that HUD had over us, to prohibit us from borrowing money to make repairs like this. They had a Harvard survey back in a year, let me think a minute, 2005, I think it was. And that's kind of what started this whole thing going. HUD, through this Harvard survey, found out that there were $35 billion in the hole to bring all the public housing units across the country up to today's standards. HUD will never have an additional $35 billion on any day of your life. So, what are you supposed to do? They really don't want to be involved any longer in the management of these developments. And that's why they came up with this program, to let the Housing Authorities act more as a private management company, get out from underneath that HUD umbrella, go over here to the family side where you can actually borrow money. Now, you're going to manipulate the monies on your own. So, now, if you can get a, I borrowed $2.1 million. I'm paying it back every month with no problem, and I think Lakeland Bank would be very thrilled to give me another $2 million five, 10 years from now. That's the only viable effort that's really been made at this point in time, because I understand too, the residents there are still restricted to how much rent you can collect from them, because it's based on their income, 30%. They're still subsidized residents. So, you're never going to get the cash flow out of the rentals there, for sure. And, and HUD knows they're never going to have enough money. That's why they went forward with this. There are 17 Housing Authorities here in New Jersey that took advantage of this rental assistance demonstration conversion. Fortunately, we were able to do so. We were one of them. And, and that's really the way the, the future of this is looking.
But I think to, to, to...
Oh, the day's going to come.
Same point that I'm trying, we're both making the same point, which is essentially, we look at this housing stock, you looking at the housing stock. You're looking at a 40-year housing stock. You're investing money on some elements of it. But ultimately, these weren't designed to be like historic homes from the 1700s that got passed down generation to generation and can survive. They're going to need to be, basically, let's be realistic, torn down, and something new has to be constructed, right? And what you're saying is, your financial option is simply this line of credit that you can borrow for up to a certain amount, right? And, but that's not a huge amount, obviously.
Not enough.
It's not enough.
No.
So, I, I don't, I'm, I don't see a, I'm not seeing a long-term solution here, to be honest, to be...
Yeah. I mean, I, I applaud what you've, you guys have done.
I agree. I'm not disagreeing to that, yeah.
And, but at that point...
It's a big problem.
$2 million doesn't build a lot of house.
Doesn't go very far.
No.
And I, I just don't know what the, the answer is.
Nancy, if you want to come up, come, come, come up.
I don't want to come up.
Yes, yes.
No, but it'd be easier for people to hear on television. They will not hear you otherwise.
Well, what I wanted to say to you is I, I really do appreciate that you're bringing up a long-term strategic view and that you care about that, because we do need to open up that dialogue and start to have it. Because if you take a look at our inventory, it's the same issue with our senior building as well. You know, that, and that's close to your Broad Street Development Project. So, if there's some creative way that we could figure out, I mean, we're going to fix the sewer, short-term, but it's going to be part of that whole promenade there. I mean, it, there's an opportunity to think big thoughts and then figure out how to afford it, right? And nobody's really doing that. I mean, that's not what we're tasked to do. We're, we're just tasked to maintain attractive properties for our current residents.
Can I ask you guys, on the Broad Street redevelopment and HUD, is, is that property... So, let's, let's hypothetically assume, right? So, let's hypothetically assume that there's a developer who's interested in taking a portion of that property to develop for some reason, and is willing to give some X amount of cash towards that. Would that need to get approval through HUD, or is that only through the Summit Housing Authority?
It would, it would be part of both. Let's, the, the building itself is not part of the Broad Street redevelopment plan.
Yes, understood.
No, what you're saying is that the developer...
The parking lot is...
But he's saying if the developer offered us, would we be able to make decisions, or do we need HUD's authority?
Yeah. Do you need HUD's approval to make decisions with relation to that property?
We don't actually need their approval. We would be able to make those decisions on our own. We would need consultation with them, because the funding for the, to assist the seniors that live there is based on that development. So, there would have to be some discussions about what happens to the project-based vouchers that are there, and how, and could HUD convert them to tenant-based vouchers. Because right now, the way the program works, that building is subsidized because you live in it. If you leave that property, you don't have a subsidy to take with you. A new person goes into that property with the subsidy that HUD provides. Now, if HUD would be willing, and they may or may not, and I don't know how open they are to any of the conversations, we would generally have it with them, they would have to convert the funding mechanism from project-based to tenant-based, so that the tenants would be able to take a subsidy with them out of the property if they needed to. This also leaves a void in the, the apartment that you have available that the tenant left. So, how do they afford that property? So, it's really the way the whole subsidy funding mechanism is designed.
Well, I, I think it's something that we, we want, that's, that's a little more specific than we, than we need to get to now. But what the question, the, the issue is, there are people in this day who absolutely have considered, how can we think big and, and assist the senior housing throughout this, this whole development process, redevelopment process? The question is, you know, what, what input does HUD have? And we'll figure that out if and when we get there.
Right.
But I just want to assure you that there, we have talked about, what can we do? We understand that this, all this, this housing stock needs some work long-term, and, and we definitely want to continue this dialogue and make sure that we are focused on the future of these houses.
Okay. One second. Susan, you have a question.
Yes. So, pleased to meet you, and I look forward to meeting with you personally to answer like the thousand questions that are rolling through my head, and I won't bore my colleagues with them right now. But two concerns I want to raise about the timing that you've just shared with us about your 26 residents and your honesty about not having an idea of what's going to happen with that. And so, I look forward to hearing more about what, how that is going to roll out, to make sure all of the, the 26 who are affected will have an opportunity to, to know what's happening, because I, I did have the pleasure of filling in for Beth as the liaison, meeting the seniors over there, who are just a really vibrant group, very interested in making sure that their well-being is heard and addressed. And so, I know, not knowing is probably the worst thing that can happen with folks. So, look forward to hearing more about that. And then, what I didn't hear you talk about was Summit historically has had this huge waiting list. And I'd like to hear if you can spend a, I know a brief amount of time on how that's going, what's the, the waiting lists, and how that's improving, not improving, what's your thoughts about?
It's never improving. It's always pliable. There's, our waiting list is open. We accept applications from either families or seniors to this day. The average waiting period for a senior is about a year and a half to two years, based on the attrition in the property. And the average waiting period for a family unit is anywhere from six to seven years.
Yeah, we don't turn over the family property. And how does that compare to the other 17 Housing Authorities?
Well, there's 82 Housing Authorities in the state. There were 17 that converted over to the Rad.
Right. And I know you, you, you seem to be a big proponent of it, so I'm, I'm just wondering if that's...
Yeah. The average, the waiting period here is actually pretty moderate. I came from a much larger Housing Authority about six years ago, and we had 2,000 units of housing. We had a waiting list open for 30 days every seven or eight years, and the waiting period for seniors was anywhere from five to eight years, and the waiting period for families was a good 12 to 15 years.
True. Okay.
Now, it was more of an urban area, candidly, and there was a terrific need in the area. We had, unfortunately, rock concert status during the days prior to opening up the waiting list, where there were police lines and barricades and 1,000 people on the street waiting to get an application.
So, I'm really happy we don't have that happening here.
We don't have that here. We're blessed a little bit from that respect. But then again, our housing stock is limited. You have 200 units of housing, and you have a need, more than, more than you have. And, and every authority that I've ever dealt with has the same issues. There's a bigger need than we all have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone from the public that has any questions that they would like to ask the opportunity right now? Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Well, we thank you for coming in, Joe. Thank you, Nancy, for coming in. This is a, let me just say, for all of us, and I want to also acknowledge Beth's contribution, who has done the last two years, has served as liaison, and does an excellent job on behalf of, of, of the city and residents in speaking up for the needs of, of residents in these various units. I think for all of us on this day, it is very, very important to make sure that the folks who live in these units know that we, we respect and understand their concerns, and that this is a major issue as far as how they're living and what, what conditions. These are some of the most vulnerable people in our society, and we take it very seriously, our responsibility, to make sure that they're treated right. So, thank you for coming in.
Right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Now, for that moment in our agenda with public comments. So, if there's someone here who wants to speak about a topic that's not on our agenda for tonight, come on up to the mic, state your name and where you live. This is your moment. You've got three minutes. Oh, not three, each person has three minutes, so whoever wants to... Going once, going twice. Okay, moving on. We have two ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read 19-3207?
An ordinance authorizing the sale of real property identified as Block 2614, Lot 2, on the tax assessment map of the City of Summit.
Counselwoman Fox?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance authorizes the sale of real property known as 71 Summit Avenue or Old Town Hall, and it's being sold to Family Promise for the appraised price of 1.4 million. The contract requires the property to revert to the city should it no longer be used to provide the services that Family Promise provides or another nonprofit function. And it restricts any changes to the building facade without prior approval of common counsel. I move this ordinance for hearing.
I second.
Okay. This hearing is now open. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? I'll ask if there's any members of the public that would... of council? I'll ask if there's any members of the public that would like to talk about this ordinance. Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll close the public session. Any further discussion for members of council? As those of you who have been following this know that this has been an ongoing issue that's been discussed in the last couple of council meetings. I think this is, we are selling for the appraised, full appraised value of the building. We have a restriction on keeping the historic facade of the building, which is very important because it keeps towards the historic character of our downtown. And it keeps one of premier nonprofits, both in Summit as well as in the country headquarters here in Summit, which is Family Promise. And so with that, I'll consider the hearing closed. Move on to our second hearing, which is 19-3208. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of this ordinance?
An ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 35 of the General Code of the City of Summit to establish the 2019 Development Regulations Ordinance.
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance adopts the Revised Development Regulations Ordinance, or DRO. This revision is in response to recommendations in the 2016 Master Plan Revision. The last comprehensive overhaul of the DRO was in 2003. And this revision streamlines the document. It makes it more user-friendly. It includes design standards for each zone as well as design guidelines that illustrate good design practices. It also includes provisions for sustainability measures. And pursuant to the municipal land use law, the Planning Board has made a determination that the ordinance is consistent with the master plan at its November meeting. And it sent a letter to that effect to Common Council. I move this ordinance for hearing.
And I second it.
Okay. I'll consider this hearing open. Before, I asked for members of council if they have any comments. There's two members in the public that are here for it. One is our Chair of the Planning Board, Bill Anderson. And I would like to ask actually Bill to come up and speak to give everyone context for this two-year effort that's taking place with regard to the Planning Board. The second is Tom Barons, who is from our planner and the Planning Board's planner, Burgess, is here in case folks have specific questions about specific sections of the revised DRO. And I'm going to just ask Tom to come sit down here with a mic in case people want to ask him specific questions. But floor is yours, Bill.
Okay. Thanks, dude. Bill Anderson, 22 Cromwell Parkway, Summit High School, Class of 69. We began this process, as Councilwoman Fox described, right after the master plan reexamen was completed. The first goal of our master, in our master plan reexam reads as follows: Guide development to maintain the character of Summit, strengthen design standards and guidelines. So when the master plan reexam was completed, the first of many steps, and just for your old information, this is a little chart that we keep on the Planning Board, which is the list of all the goals and all the sub-goals. And then following behind that is a list of tasks that we keep, you know, sort of keep this thing up to date and follow through with the various things that the master plan has asked us to do. So first of all, was tackling the DRO. And as Councilwoman Fox said, it was published a long time ago, had 30-plus amendments attached to it, and it was very difficult for people to work through because of the amendments. It's hard to find your way. And there are certain things that were duplicated as well. So as regard to the process, once we completed the master plan reexam, we engaged Burgess and Associates. And Tom is a senior member of that team as our planning consultants. We set up a subcommittee of the Planning Board, of which myself, Rick Mathias, and Chris Dunn, a former member of the Zoning Board, was on that. We spent quite a bit of time interacting with the staff. The staff spent extensive amount of time reviewing the DRO sector by sector, section by section. And that was Paul Cascase, Rick Mathias, Krista Anderson, and many others, as Paul can attest. The Board has, you know, met a number of times. We've reviewed it in sections as a board and we've reviewed it as a whole as a board a number of times. And one of the things that we tried very hard to do was to try to strike a balance between, you know, what the community's needs were and effectively what private property rights were. And that's a balance that, you know, one needs to keep in mind. The document was reviewed by council. Michael Rogers helped coordinate that. So it has been reviewed by council as well for, you know, conformance with municipal land use law. So as I mentioned, it was difficult, a little bit difficult to use. It needed to be redone. And the objectives from the Board's perspective was, one, as we said earlier, to make it easier to work through, make it able, make the user able to find things that he needed in one place and not multiple places. We wanted a thorough set of design standards and guidelines. And we wanted illustrations in the document of what was good, what we thought were good options within regard to the design standards. And that was something a little bit unique in terms of our ordinances. Not a lot of ordinances around that we saw that had these illustrations. So I think it was a good step. We want a staff to be able to find the document, find pieces of the document and provisions in the document that were specific and enforceable. The enforceability is very important. We didn't want to have a lot of goals and objectives that were very broad and not easily enforced. And so someone like Krista could say to an applicant, look at this section. The section specifically says, this is how you need to do it. There's also another aspect of this thing that I would, of the document, which I would call aspirational. And I think the guidelines are more of an aspirational look at things. The design standards are more specific. The other aspect, I think, of the document that's somewhat aspirational has to do with, you know, the sustainability features of it. And probably the green new building development bonus and the electric charging stations are probably the most aspirational slash possibly cutting-edge because there's not a lot of communities that have addressed those directly. Although when we did discuss those items, both at the subcommittee level and the Board level, we asked Tom and his team to do some research, multiple communities around the tri-state area, to find out how they dealt with bonuses for sustainable issues for sustainability and charging stations. So if you have any specific questions on that, Tom can certainly address that. And ultimately, after going back and forth between staff and subcommittee and the Board levels and Burgess Associates, we got comfortable with the sustainability features that are in it. And as I think we've talked before, this is really a living document. It's our vision that, you know, once we've completed this 400-plus-page document, it's not something that, you know, like the master plan, we don't put it on a shelf. We know there are going to be unintended consequences. We know that there's a few, couple little minor errors in it now with street names and a couple of typos that have snuck in there. We put in place at our last Board meeting, a quarterly mechanism. Basically, we're creating a to-do list or a list of items that fall in these categories that need to be looked at. So we will study them each quarter. We will vet the issues and suggestions that come in. And then ultimately, amendments will be made over time. So we want to keep the document alive. We want to keep it relevant. And so that's really kind of all I have to say about that. In terms of the document, it was a terrific process. I want to thank the staff. I want to thank Burgess Associates and all the members of the Planning Board that spent many, many hours reading this document. And Marjorie, Councilwoman Fox, we appreciate your help as well. And Tom is here because he knows this document forward and backwards. And I'm just here as a pretty face.
Thank you, Bill. And you're not just a pretty face. And though you are. But, I mean, Bill has led the Planning Board for, I don't know how many years now.
Couple of years, yeah.
Yeah. And this, so I was still council liaison on the Planning Board when we finished off the master plan process and we began this process. And I think what folks should understand is what, how significant this is. Because the concern that many of us had when we finished the master plan process was, okay, now we have a document. It's there. What happens to it? Does it just simply sit on the shelf and do nothing? And what we have through this process, what the Planning Board has been able to achieve is to take those things that in the master plan are 40,000 feet of what the community wants and bring it down to actually implementable things. And that is quite a big, significant achievement. And it has taken two years. It has been long. And the folks at the Planning Board, all of them, and I'm not going to list all the folks because I'm going to miss somebody undoubtedly. But we, as a community, owe them a great deal of thanks for the incredible hard work. And I know that there was push and pull about different ideas and thoughts about it. But as a community of 22,000, everything gets compromised and we try to find where the middle is that works for most people. And the fact that the Planning Board was able to unanimously get to the conclusion of having this document speaks so highly of the dedication and hard work that the Planning Board folks have done in this project that is really incredible. So with that little intro from me, I'll open it up for anyone who has specific questions or comments.
Thank you, Council President.
I landed here by Craig, but then it went down. Sorry.
I'll go next.
Yeah, you can go next. I promise. I have a couple of questions. At first, I want to thank you for all the work that's gone into this. I know that this has been a tremendous document. And I'm going to try to keep this brief. And I do, I'm heartened to hear that we're going to have this quarterly review process. Because in, of course, in this 500-page document, there's things that maybe need to be tweaked or, you know, there's going to be questions here on the dais tonight. There might be questions from residents. And, you know, it's good to hear that there's a process in place where we can address some of these issues. So the first and probably most of my questions involve the green building section, which I first want to commend you on including. I'm really happy to see that this has been included and that we're giving incentives for doing green building and sustainability. And I'm really happy about that since it's a brand-new section. This is the section I probably had the most questions on. And one of, I'm just curious, I'm a little confused on the wording about the, how the incentives work together. Is it the intent that you either qualify for an LED incentive or you qualify for some of these other minimum green building standards? And if you're not qualifying for the full LED incentives, can you combine some of the minimum green building standards to get to that point? I'm just not, it's not clear to me from the wording like how that all works. Can you explain that?
So the intent was to create an opportunity for an either-or scenario, that you wouldn't necessarily be able to combine both because we thought that the incentives were generous enough on their own for each individual strategy or level of lead certification. So to answer your question, the lead criteria is separate from the various menu items. And the menu items themselves are to be implemented alone with no other incentive.
So if you qualified for the minimum water use reduction and the minimum energy demand, you would pick one or the other to get for the incentive? Does that make sense?
I believe that would be the case, yes.
Okay.
I believe that would be the case.
Okay. So, and then how the incentives, the two units per acre or, you know, the different FAR standards, how were those chosen? Are those standards from a regulatory agency or some kind of advisory board? Are those called together from different communities that have instituted similar practices? How did we come up with these numbers?
So these incentives are available for development other than single and two-family types of development. So these aren't available to the average home in Summit.
Yep.
The way, the review process is such that these would become available at the site plan level. And the amounts that are provided, so two units per acre, 10% FAR, are the maximum limitation for which a developer can apply for that. And so the review process would occur at the site plan level, which the Board would vet the project and determine whether or not such an incentive would be warranted, possibly negotiated, such as typically occurs at the development or site plan review level.
And how did we, my question was more like, how did we come up with these numbers? Were they from an advisory capacity or industry standards?
They are based on industry standards. They're based on the few examples in New Jersey and based on examples nationwide.
Okay, thank you.
And ultimately, the quantities or the amounts that you see are based on what we think would trigger a developer to actually employ one of these incentives. That's the whole point. Otherwise, it's useless. Sorry.
Okay. And then my last question on this section, and then I have one more follow-up question, is that we are expecting developers to adhere to these standards for a five-year period. And I just was wondering why there's that restriction. Is it because after five years, if they're still meeting all those standards, we expect that the building's going to continue to meet these standards? Or is that a period of time in which the LED qualifications might change? Why did we pick a five-year period?
It has to do with performance. And sometimes a building's performance can't be evaluated until the building's been occupied for a period of time.
Okay.
So it's making sure that they've built and delivered what they've agreed to and what they've been granted these incentives for.
Okay. And then I have one follow-up question on the dormers part of the GR, if you could look at that.
Okay.
I have a vested interest in dormers, as some people know. And we came, the language I'm just going to read is, "The width of any individual attic dormer above the second floor of a dwelling shall be limited to maximum of 50% of the width of the floor above which the dormer situates." So it's basically 50% of the roof line there. So my question is twofold. One, it doesn't address whether it's in the front or the back. And I assume like we want to encourage or allow homeowners to fully shed dormer the backs of their houses to get maximum space in capes and one-story houses. And this seems to prohibit that. And secondly, this doesn't address double dormers, which is more of an issue. And one of the things that we've addressed in different design standards and looking at the issue of double dormers, which seem to be more of a design problem. And thirdly, in my own neighborhood, you know, I just taking a look, like most of the houses in my neighborhood have front dormers that are more than 50% of the roof line but are completely historically appropriate and appropriate to the neighborhood. And I wouldn't want to prohibit that in a new build or someone renovating because it fits in with the neighborhood. So this seems to be kind of an arbitrary, you know, I just have questions about how this came about.
That's fair, sure.
And if it's addressing the problems that we need to address with this.
So the provision was intended to address an issue that was brought up at the Planning Board level. And the issue was to prevent a dormer at the third level of the building. So you had a first floor, second floor, and then an attic level. And basically, a dormer that could occupy the entire length of the facade and create the appearance of a three-story building from that direction, which could face a street or the side of the rear. So the idea was that, not for a cape to expand, but once you're up at that third attic level, that you would have to create some level of roof articulation. So you could have multiple dormers. It's just that any single dormer couldn't be greater than 50%. And the idea is, again, to create that breakup. So you have two stories and then an attic level. And the attic space itself is also regulated by the FAR that's permissible in the zone. I wasn't quite sure what you meant by double dormers. You mean like two side by side?
That's when there's an existing second-floor dormer and then a third-floor dormer is built on top of it. So it's like a dormer on top of a dormer.
Okay.
There's a famous example that is easily visible in my particular neighborhood that is often passed around. So I'm thinking of one.
Is that something that's desirable or?
No, it's not desirable.
This is why Beth is asking all of these questions.
I was hoping that we were going to address the type of issue.
This provision may be addressing that specific example. And again, that sort of one-story look and to provide some articulation at that level. So again, you don't have a three-level cohesive building wall, if that makes any sense. So we were less concerned with where the dormers are located. They can be located in the front, side, or rear. But just that, once you get to the attic level, you can't create that tall building wall. Because dwellings, or single-family dwellings are only allowed to be two stories tall with some attic space.
Okay. Thanks. I'll turn over. Someone else did.
Great. Your turn.
Thank you, Council President. I have three comments. The first is a little bit of a story. I'll be super quick. So I was reading the packet over the weekend and I was sitting next to a friend who asked if we could do a little test. And the test was to see if you could find out if you need a permit to build a fence in your backyard. So you can easily Word search this document. You can Ctrl+F. And you type in fence. There's 62 times the word fence appears in the document. But then you work your way through to page 293. And there is a subsection called fences, walls, or wall-like structures. So I, then the second thing under there, it says, "Permit. A zoning permit shall be obtained for all fences prior to the construction or installation of any fence." So I think that it's that simple to figure it out is the goal. And I want to commend you for that. The second thing is, we speak all the time up here about the character of the city. This document literally puts into words what the city should look like across the entire thing. And that look then will translate over the years into the continued feel of the city. And I think that it's just incredibly important. And the third is that I was on the Planning Board when, around the time that this process was started. And I know what a massive, massive undertaking this was. So I just want to take a second So I just want to take a second to thank the members of the planning board, all the city staff members, and Burgess Associates for this incredible work. I think it's, I think it's really a huge improvement, so thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else on this? Susan?
So I am the newest member to council, and I feel like the luckiest to be the beneficiary of what is a very thoughtful and a really complex document and how it's been improved over the two years. And your explanation, Bill, I want to thank you for the context that you set. It really, like I said, makes me feel privileged to join at this time. And then Tom, to thank you in particular for the executive summary that I was talking to Paul and Marjorie about, and I was like, guys, how am I going to read a 500-page document? What goes here? And you did an amazing job of synthesizing what's changed, what's happened, and you have piqued my interest to go and really dig into those pages. So I wanted to thank you and all the members of the planning board for the master plan and how you synthesize it and how you say it really guides what's happening in a living way. And so I just wanted to say how meaningful it is for a newbie.
Thank you, Susan.
I think one of the processes that need this document flow as it is, really goes back to the master plan process. And others on the process can speak to this as well. The public hearings that we had were extremely valuable because people told us what they want. And I've said this in public, basically what I learned was, you know, we like Summit the way it is, don't screw it up. So that's what we're trying, right? We're trying to codify what's in the master plan, what the goals of the people and other constituents said to us, and make it sort of work. It's a balancing act, it really is a balancing act. Some people like the word "may," some people like the word "shall."
Lawyers.
Back and forth, and there's a big difference between those page by page. So, but I think the public process that we undertook, as maybe as it was, really set them.
And you've made it transparent, so that's what I'm very, very appreciative of.
Thank you, Susan.
Steve. Okay. So, thank you again. And, you know, coming from the zoning board history, you know, we have a couple of people here that have done the planning board. I had a history on the zoning board, and I want to thank you guys for addressing some of the air conditioning unit and generators that will not be in front of the board, although they addressed it in the past. I think that is well documented. My other board that I'm on is the Historic Preservation Committee. And what I want to say is, when I read through this, I think you guys did an excellent job in, rather than replacing the renovation has to fit the community or the neighborhood, which is what the old phraseology used to be. You went in detail into talking about how the bricks and the structure and the front needs to be, you know, in compliance or have a good flow, you know, and I think that will help. Additionally, the fact that you encourage redevelopment in the, or renovations in the back rather than the front where the streetscape is, will be maintained. I guess my next question is, is Historic Preservation and their section. When do we see a completion of that?
Great question. That's item number two. After the master plan reexam, we started down that road, being with constituents and people of interest in historic preservation, and being with the staff and that's all been done. It's complicated, more complicated than we probably expected. We felt that if we tried to incorporate it here, that it would delay this then by half a year or more. So the idea was to pull that out, tackle this as a separate issue, so I'm trying to pull together a subcommittee on the planning board to tackle historic preservation, and that's the next thing that we want. Surely we have an ordinance in town, reservation, you can look at ordinances, as Tom can point out, that are very tough, Milburn, some that are much more suggestive. And so it's going to be an interesting process for us. But again, going back to the master plan, it means we have the public, it's something that's important to people. They move from New York City or Hoboken or elsewhere in the world, they came to Summit and say, like, the character of downtown, or like the character of the neighborhoods. A big portion of that is the historic nature of some of these homes. That being said, property rights, you know, I own a home, you know, I want to tear it down. We don't want to make it easy for you to do that. We'd like to consult with you along the way and say, would you consider, would you please, would you do that? At some point, they're going to definitely like to do it. The objective, as I see it going forward, is to try to find a set of guidelines and a little bit of encouragement to character to make it better, which I have a story. And that being said, that's our next objective. I'm hoping, you know, June, finish, maybe before, that we'll have something that we can bring to the table.
Like I said, I, you know, I'm really encouraged, not so much that the Historic Preservation has that section, but you did tackle maintaining the integrity. And I think you, you know, at least give the zoning board of adjustment a tool to manage it in between, you know, acceptance and whenever that comes about. My other thing, Bill, you kind of gave the, gave my question away. The electric.
That's the first thing on my list.
What's that?
I started the list five minutes after we had our conversation. So on my computer, I have comments to the new DRO.
Electric charging stations? It's amazing how conversations go. I guess my question is, is can you provide a little background on that? Because, you know, 7% seems high when, you know, last year, the hybrids were 2.1% in the United States. That's all hybrids, you know, and here we are putting a charging station for, at 7% on a parking lot that's 20 spots. You know, that's the CVS parking lot spot, and we've all been in CVS's parking spot. Take one of those slots away for a charging station. And I understand you can go to, you know, the board of adjustment and ask for a variance. However, we also want this to be easy, to make a developer not have another hurdle to.
We went back and forth on this, and I'll let Tom answer the question because he did the research on it.
So it's an emerging technology that we're seeing now pop up in other towns, and basically these car companies and electricity providers are now trying to really create a network throughout the country so that this technology can be used more readily, reduce carbon emissions and so forth. And most towns are not equipped to address the technology right now, so it automatically, in many cases, becomes a use variance and goes to the zoning board. So on the one hand, we're trying to encourage this, but also create a set of procedural parameters so that the city knows how to deal with it when and if such an application occurs on the retail side, but we're also requiring it in anticipation of, I guess, greater usage of that technology and from what the industry has told us is coming fairly quickly. I know in one town, we were given a presentation that talked about, I guess, a few hundred thousand cars coming to the country on an annual basis that are going to need this type of infrastructure. So I don't think it's that far out. When you talk about percentages, we looked at range, I think we started at five, and actually the reaction was that, gee, well, that may not be enough, and so 10 was too much, so we landed sort of in the middle as a compromise. There are towns that do a phased approach that are talking about, that have provision that says something like between 2020 and 2025, it'll be 3% thereafter in the next five-year increment, it goes up to 5%, whatever the next percentage is, 5% five years later, 7% and so on. But I guess this was our attempt to come up with a standardized approach to address a technology that seems to be wanted and that's coming, whether we like it or not.
I don't know what the city itself is doing in its own parking lots, if any.
We're putting two.
Yeah.
We've got to grant money for putting in two parking at the DeForest lot, one.
I think there's some good questions, you know, labor, the whole thing, where does it go? Is it right next to the handicap space? Or is it way back at the corner, the far corner of the lot, you know, in terms of priorities? And we try to encourage people to walk, or we try to encourage people to use it, and what happens is somebody parks it and it's not working. There's a number of things that you kind of have to think through. You know, we took our best guess in between five and ten, we said, we picked up seven. It's number one on my list of things to think about in the first quarter. If we fight over time, there's too much of a burden, we'll adjust it if we find it's not enough. We wanted to make a statement about it again as part of the master plan, thinking about sustainability. We felt like it was something you should at least take a stand on. We also bifurcated it between if you own a lot versus someone coming in, let's say as a member who's your owner of it, you put it in yourself for your customers, or in effect, you subcontract it onto a retailer and it becomes a retail operation inside of a parking lot. So we bifurcated those two things because they really are so different. I don't know, just the retail piece of the lot.
So there are operators that will lease a portion of an existing parking space at a big box retailer, somewhere where there's extra parking, surplus parking, six or 10 spaces, and will basically put charging stations there and will charge people to come and charge your vehicles there. And people, it's different than fuel service where people happen upon a gas station. When they're using this technology, they seek these locations out via apps now so they know exactly where they're going and so they can connect along the network, et cetera. So there's less signage involved and they can be tucked back on certain lots.
Marjorie.
I just wanted to thank Bill for his leadership on this, the planning board and Burgess and also DCS. I participated in this as on council, as the council liaison on the planning board for a year, and it was a major effort on everyone's part, so thank you so much. I'm very excited particularly about some of the sustainability measures about how they remove the barriers for implementing things like solar and electric chargers and green roofs. And these are things that residents and businesses have said they've wanted to do, but it's always been a difficult process to have these things happen. So now we have measures that will make it easier for people to do the right thing and to know what they can and can't do. So I think having certainty and having guidelines that make, that take the uncertainty out of it, that don't require people now to go, now sometimes people have to go to the zoning board to get approval for a solar panel if it may be too high. And so to take those kinds of issues out of the picture, I think is a great first step.
Greg.
Nevermind.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Nora.
Just real quick, I'm glad you, Bill, thank you. Thank you for all the hard work you've done, and thank you to the planning board members, Marjorie and David, when you were first involved. We first started talking about the master plan four years ago, and a lot of people in town said, what's the master plan revision? Why are we doing this? And there were certainly people that said to me, you're having these public meetings, what are you going to do with this information? And here we are, about to embark on redevelopment, which will affect the entire city in one particular area, but this DRO affects everybody who comes into town to do business or everyone who lives here who wants to either renovate their home or buy a new home, sell a home. So I, what seemed like an esoteric kind of exercise in futility to some people, really was the groundwork for these very, very fruitful and important projects. So thank you for leading this, and thank you to everybody for the support. Michael and David and Mike were the, it was us, we're up here, right? We're the only ones here from four years ago. And, you know, we were skeptical, perhaps maybe a little bit at first, but it was a really great project to embark on. It's really laid the groundwork for some great things coming. So thank you very much, and I should probably give a shout out to Jeff Wagenback if he's watching.
Absolutely. He's my, I'm his Padawan learner. He's really shepherded the master plan process.
He did.
But if it wasn't for the council's courage to do that, take that a little different approach, we wouldn't be on today. So leadership is critical.
Thank you. Believe it or not, we still haven't asked anybody from the public whether they would like any comments. Is there anybody from, a member of the public who would like to speak about this issue? Going once, going twice? Okay. Any further comments before I close it? Again, thank you all. Thank you to the city staff, Paul, your office, everyone there, Michael, and everybody at Burgess, Tom, you, and Joe, for all of your hard work and for getting us to where we are, and of course, the members of the planning board. With that, I'll consider this ordinance, hearing for this ordinance closed. On to final consideration. Madam Clerk, would you please read 19-3207?
An ordinance authorizing the sale of real property identified as block 2614, lot two, on the tax assessment map of the city of Summit.
Roll call, please. Oh, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Rush it along, right?
Moving along.
Yeah. So we just had the hearing on this ordinance, and I move this ordinance for final consideration.
And I second it.
Now roll call.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
The president and I do.
Aye. Moving on to 19-3208. Madam Clerk, would you please read this ordinance?
An ordinance to repeal and replace chapter 35 of the general code of the city of Summit to establish the 2019 development regulations ordinance.
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. We just had a hearing on this proposed ordinance, and I move this ordinance for final consideration.
I second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
The president and I do.
Aye. Okay, moving on to resolutions. We have three resolutions for finance. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. The first finance resolution, number 6815, is to authorize the schedule of school levy payments. They will be paid out as close as possible on the first day of each month, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. Okay. Any comments from members of council? Any comments or questions for members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, finance, number two. Councilwoman Fox, Councilwoman Fox, Little, sorry. So used to Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. The second finance resolution, number 6825, is to authorize the 2020 municipal sewer, parking, and school debt service payments. These are the amounts for the known payments for principal and interest on these bonds and notes that cover these areas, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, finance, number three. Councilwoman Little, please.
Thank you, Council President. The final finance resolution, number 6812, is to authorize Summit's renewal of membership in the suburban municipal joint insurance fund, otherwise known as the JIF, and this membership terminates on December 31st. So we clearly want to renew our membership in the fund, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, law and labor, we have two. Councilman Bowman, number one.
Number one. ID number 6620 is to declare vacancy in Department of Community Services, Department of Public Works. As we discussed in closed session today, this position is vital in the trash collection and also snow removal. I move, we move this resolution.
I second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, law and labor, number two. Councilman Bowman.
ID number 6829 is to declare vacancy in the police department. We have a policeman who is no longer with us, and as we discussed in closed session, I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Capitol Projects, number one. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorized, rejects a bid and authorizes negotiations for snow and ice removal services on walks and open spaces for 2020 and 2021 with an option for one, two-year extension. two-year extension. This project was bid out initially, it received no bids, and we then put it out for bid a second time, and we received one bid that exceeded the project cost estimate. So, now, under the law, we're allowed to reject that bid and begin negotiations for those services. So, I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Capitol Projects, number two. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Pursuant to closed session discussion, this resolution alters the membership of the Parkline Steering Committee to designate one Parkline Foundation representative and two resident members in place of the two community members that were formerly on the steering committee. The citizen members will be appointed at the council reorganization meeting on January 2nd. Or, actually, it's resident members, not citizen members that we're calling them, will be appointed at the council meeting on January 2nd. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Capitol Projects, number three, has been pulled because pursuant to our closed session discussion, we are still in negotiation for conditional designation. That moves us on to the consent agenda. One item from the consent agenda, finance, number one, has been removed because it's not ripe yet for approval.
Excuse me, Council President, I think it's finance, the number three on the finance consent agenda is the one that's being pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First one is the one under the same.
I'm sorry.
Capitol Projects.
This one.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're pulling Capitol Projects, that's what I meant to say.
And number one, number three under Congress.
Sorry, that's what I meant. Capitol Projects, the only one, and the number three on the finance. So, thank you, Councilwoman Little, for the correction. So, with that amended version of the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as so amended?
So moved, second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, councilmember, comments in your business? Anyone?
Yeah, just a reminder, I'm sure everyone's been inundated on their emails all day today as have I.